Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're welcoming everyone to a new school year. It's always exciting for me, it feels like a fresh start. Acceptance of the minutes. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass. Public forum, is there any, are you signed in? We need the sheet, please. We need the sheet up here, please. Mrs. McKissick, and you would like to speak about elementary dismissal?
Yes.
And you know the rules, three minutes.
Got it. I'm here because, I'm here because we've had some absolutely wonderful changes in the elementary school. Little rough for some people.
Mrs. McKissick, if I can just interrupt you for a minute, people won't be able to hear you at home if they're watching, so you might want to talk to the microphone.
Nicole, our new principal, called it controlled chaos. And that was a very good description of it. Different procedures, different avenues for parents to travel, different for the children, different for the teachers. But when I tell you, it's made a world of difference in how we're handling things. It's still a little chaotic, but as change comes, you might have a little rough around the edges. I'm here because I heard that there were supposed to be some folks coming to lash out at what's been going on. And I wanted to show my support, to let people know, we are doing the very, very best we can, under the circumstances, with the new procedures, working with the parents, helping out, doing what we can do. My suggestion to some of the parents would be to definitely continue to read the updates and the information that goes out, to know your child's teacher, to know what grade your child is in, and for anyone other than yourself that's picking up your children, make sure they are listed on the forms, because we're not giving your babies, your precious babies, to anybody that's not on that paper. I'm part of the team that's down there that does the dismissal, so I'm speaking from firsthand information. This school has never felt safer to me after 3 o'clock than it does now. Been here 20 years, and when I tell you it's a different atmosphere, yes, it's a little chaotic, but we're going to get there. And kudos to Ms. Maserata, and Nicole I, and all of the lovely people who are giving their time and energy to stay a little after contractual time to assist in getting these babies out the door. I just wanted you to know, whatever you're hearing, it's not that bad, and parents, do your job too. Make us, keep all of your children safe. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McKissick. We are up to reports, information, and correspondence. I wanted to share with you, Mr. Matrician, obviously, is not here this evening, but he did ask me to relay some information to you. The first thing is, on September 25th, at the board meeting, there will be a resolution on the agenda to approve for the voting of the referendum for the construction project in December. The architects will be here that night to discuss with us the scope of the project, and to finalize items for the construction referendum. Dr. Timms will be here to discuss the financial components. So, if you have questions, concerns, comments, that will be the night before we decide to move this referendum forward. The other note that he wanted to mention tonight was, at the October 9th meeting, the school mascot will be included in the agenda as a discussion item, and hopefully, we can come to some consensus or agreement about how to move forward with that. But that will take place on October 9th as a discussion item on the agenda. And the last thing is, I personally, and I think the board is in agreement here, want to thank the administration and staff for getting the building together in time for school to open, because if you had been in here a few weeks ago, you would never think it was possible, but everyone went the extra mile, and it was wonderful to come into a clean and orderly building. So, thank you to all of you. Okay, board membership, do we have anyone who would like to speak to information, correspondence, or reports? Jody?
I'd like to see if we can schedule a walk-through through the buildings. When we did the last walk-through, there was a lot of construction still going on, and I think now that it's completed, or at the phase that the schools opened, I'd like to schedule a walk-through for us.
Okay, we'll poll the board to see what days are good, maybe before the next meeting, depending upon, you know, how much we have for executive session, if we cut it back to 6:00. But I'm not sure what we'll have. So, if not, we'll pick another day, and we can do a couple of tours if people, if it's not a good day, if anyone wants to, you know, walk through, we can do that individually if we can't get everybody together. So, we'll poll you for some dates to see what we can do.
Anyone else have any? John?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, last spring, the mayor of Ellenville sent us a letter to the Board of Ed, asking us to meet with the town and village boards, to try and figure out why the property values in our area were below market value. I was dismayed to read in the Sirangang Journal, a week after that, that the mayor was quoted as saying that the district had an image problem, and that it was affecting the village. I don't have to remind everyone of all the great things that's going on in our district, the new reading program, the elementary, the summer program, the Hall of Fame, the teachers are doing an outstanding job. And I was dismayed to, again, read in the journal recently, that an auditor was quoted as saying that the village does not have its accounting in order. So, you know, not to take offense at people putting down our district, but I would just like to offer the mayor to maybe get his own house in order, before coming after us, because right now, it appears to me as though the village has an image problem that's affecting the district. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Mr. Matthews?
I was thinking over the weekend, with the school opening and the construction projects, I was going to ask Mr. Napoli if there's a simple way to summarize what has been done, how much we have paid for that work, and what's remaining to physically be done. I was, you know, more looking at physical. You know, the roof, you know, we did 75% of the roof, we spent X amount of dollars. Just something, a simple summary, where we are.
Sure, I can give that to you at the, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. And several years ago, we went to a central, a central copy station, and we have not spoke about that in several years. I'd like to maybe get a recap on how that's going.
Sure, did you have a particular format that you wanted, or I don't, I don't remember what we did in the past?
Simple.
Okay.
Simple.
I'll put something together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Story?
I would like to also thank the staff. The buildings look great, especially with the construction and the amount of time they had. Mr. Napoli, do you know if the canopy issues that we spoke about during the walk-through were addressed?
So, I can tell you that the lights should be installed this week. There, I talked to the electrician last night, or the night before, I don't remember, by the end of the week, they should have the LED lights installed, so that we'll have lighting underneath the canopy. I know that we're working with our construction manager to come up with a way to muffle or baffle any rain that might be coming in horizontally. He's coming up with a couple of other designs for us, whether it's a retractable, oh, good grief, awning. Right. So, he's got to come up with some ideas for us, he's got some experience with this in the past at other places. I'm just waiting for him to put something together formal, so we can take a look at it.
What about the caps?
What about the caps? Oh, if that's not done, then I'll follow up. The bolts that hold the, yeah, okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Julius?
Last evening, I was privileged to be a part of the 9/11 services that were held in the village. And first of all, I'd like to thank us for taking part, of being a part of the setup and making it work. Secondly, I'd like to find out if there's any way that we can work to encourage our young people to be a part of that memorial service. I believe it's something that we need to, to keep in front, because it makes us all aware of where we've come from, who we are, and the fact that we're, we're all one in this world together, and we, as Americans, have to be vigilant, and we have to be compassionate and loving to each other. So, I'd like to find out ways that we can emphasize it, or make sure that it's a part of the history that our young people see. We have a tendency to let some parts of history drift away. No one knows but those that experienced it, and we need to find some way of making it something that does not slip away. It was an awakening time for our world, especially for our country, and we need to keep it to a point to where all of us are willing to step up and let the world know we remember, let the world know those families that lost, let them know that we, we will remember, and because of it, we will pay more attention to what goes on around us, so.
Thank you, Julius. May I ask a question? I would like to know, who organizes that ceremony every year?
Robert Berger and Paul Craft are the main organizers.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else have any, anything to say? The student representatives, Sanjita Raman and Alyssa Santiago, I think the next meeting?
We're hoping to have an orientation, yes, and have someone seated at the next meeting.
Very good. And Superintendent Wiles?
Yeah, so there are also two other officers that aren't listed there. We have Isabella Donahue and Cara Thompson that might fill in. We're going to try to see, you know, the students are pretty busy with a lot of different activities, but we'll have a report at the meeting from somebody, one of the officers. So, I want to tell you that our opening for the 18-19 school year went extraordinarily well. I want to thank Mrs. McKissick for coming and giving us an inside view of what dismissal looks like. There have been a number of changes with regard to arrival and dismissal in the elementary school, and I do want to talk a little bit about the process, so that if there's any misinformation out there, we can clear it up. I want to start by saying that the reason why there were changes made was to limit the access to the building at the end of the school day. So, historically, what we've had is during the school day, the doors are locked, you have to buzz in, and then, in the past, at 3:45, the doors would open, and there would be less than organized chaos. It would just be chaos, and people would come in, not one, maybe two, three, or four, or five people, to pick up their siblings, or their children, or their grandchildren, or whoever the contact person was. And there has been discussion over the last couple of years on how to modify and manage that, so that the safety of the children and the staff, primarily the students, are really first and foremost. So, there's been a lot of discussion, there were committee meetings, number of committee meetings, and our new principal, and our assistant principal, who's been there for a year, along with teachers and staff members, sat down and talked about, very thoughtfully, different things. And there were, there were a lot of, I'll call it tabletop exercises, so to speak, on what it would look like, and how it could look, with a lot of input. And the process that we came up with is to dismiss all of our walkers and all of our pickups down the K1 wing. And there's a distinguishing factor now between walkers and pickups. Walkers get dismissed, and they get checked off as they leave. Pickups are, parents still want to sign out their students. So, today, I had the opportunity, and remember, today's day four, just saying, it's not day, you know, day one, we lost our PA system, there were some natural disasters, I'll call, for day one. And then, we have a lot of parents that take their kids to school, and drop their kids, and pick them up, day one, but it lessens over, you know, the course of a week. That being said, day four today, I had the opportunity to look at the camera and compare day one to day four. And I would tell you that our goal is to have most, all of our students, more than the majority, dismissed by 3:45. But I will tell you, in the past, even when we had parents come into the building, not all the students were picked up by 3:45. Very often, there were students that were in the classrooms in the buildings that had to be taken to the office, because parents didn't pick up by 3:45. So, we're really asking for parents to, you know, work with us. We're not trying to keep parents out of the building, we're trying to keep students safe. Make sure your paperwork, as Mrs. McKissick said, is filled out properly, so we know how to dismiss. I can tell you that the staff, and with, under the leadership of Mrs. Iav, are really working hard to tweak this, and have this modified, hopefully, by the end of the week, and we have a good process. But I will tell you that they're tweaking it every day, there's different ideas, nobody's close to changing things to make this work for the best interest of the students and the staff. So, we have a lot of staff members, I want to thank the staff members, not only in the elementary school, but we really had a great opening. And I say this to the teachers every year, for those of you that, you know, don't come, we have great teachers, we have a great school, you know, we have our challenges, but we also are very committed to moving, you know, forward, and as Mr. Byrne said, you know, there's a lot of very positive things happening here, some discourse about things, but we always seem to come to some consensus, and move our students and our school forward. So, I just want to tell you, I have not had such a good feeling in a number of years about the start of school. We had a great start, some tweaks, but, you know, change comes with some resistance, and it also comes with rough edges, and we're just going to work through it, just like we work through life. So, we're all lucky to be in this district, and, you know, we're moving forward with that. But we, we had a great opening. Traffic patterns changed in the, in the parking lot, and we do have Ellenville PD, we have a police officer down there directing traffic in the morning, that seems to have gone really well. We've all worked collaboratively to open up a number of parking spaces for our parents. But, you know, with regard to dismissal, we are working at it, and we are trying to modify it. So, just getting back to what I was saying when I was watching the camera system today, you know, people can come and wait online, but we had parents, a number of parents, that started, that lined up at 10:00 to 3:00. And I just want to tell everybody that your students aren't even being dismissed from their classrooms until 3:20. So, I kind of equate that to a concert. So, you know, if you're, if you love a band, and you want to get into the concert, or you want to buy, go to Best Buy for a Playstation, it's a hot, you go in the middle of the night and you wait in line. So, here, it's 10:00 to 3:00. The students aren't even going to be down in that K1 building until 3:25. So, you are going to wait a solid 40 minutes if you get there at 10:00 to 3:00. So, by the time they, by the time 3:20 rolled around, or 3:25, when I, when we were looking at the cameras today, by, by, I would say, 3:45, 3:50, the line was considerably less, and we did have some stragglers, but by 4:00, it was pretty emptied out. But I know we're, we're shooting for 3:45, and they're hoping to get there. So, I just wanted to share, we're all very cognizant of this, and we're looking at solutions. The principal's very solution-based, very supportive of our students, and very supportive of the staff. So, I'll have more information for you as we go forward with this. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Napoli?
Thank you. In addition to the elementary school dismissal changes, if you drive through the bus lane, you'll see that the buses are now parking at a 17-degree angle to the sidewalk. That does a couple of things for us. One, is it allows us to have the exhaust go out towards the parking lot, not roll back into the buildings, but it also keeps the students safer, where no one can actually drive alongside of a bus. Many years in the past, and I've witnessed it firsthand, a car would pull into the bus lane, it passed the buses, even while the buses had their reds on, that would create a safety hazard. So, we have the buses at an angle, which is, we weren't sure if it was going to work, but it actually is working, and it's working very well. There are, in my report, I talk about a LOES grant, we're applying for, LOES has money available to schools, and we're looking to have all the benches that were installed back when our middle school was put up, anywhere from the flagpole all the way back to the middle school office, have them all replaced through the LOES grant, we're applying for that. Hopefully, we'll be successful with that grant. In addition, I'm working with our Bosse's Grant Writer on this grant, but also a grant for a community garden. There, there's money available for that, so I know that we've talked about a community garden here, we just have to pull some plans together and apply for that grant, and there's, there's lots of funding available for that as well. And then, I don't think there's anything else there that I really need to talk about, but I will entertain any questions that are on my report.
Actually, I have a question. There was a section here about the budget, and some changes in handling the tax files, and can you, it seems like it might be a big deal.
At first blush, it would look like it would be a big deal.
Yeah, it does.
So, what happened was, was when Sullivan County printed our bills, this is the second year we're working with this company, we haven't identified whether they had a decimal error, or they had some type of a problem with loading our tax data, but the tax bills, just for the 900 parcels in Sullivan County, we're going to be collecting like $1,043 more than what we're supposed to.
Per?
No, total, in totality. So, that's like a dollar per parcel.
But that, all of those would have been wrong. I mean, 900, even though it's not a lot of money, the actual totals would have been correct.
Correct. So, one person, it might be $2, one person, it might be .33. So, it's near impossible to figure out what each one would be. So, for next year, what we'll do is, we will, I will compute the tax levy, and then the warrant for that township, and then reduce the levy for that town next year by that $1,043.
Across the board, then?
Across the board for all those 900 parcels. So, that, that's how we address that.
I, I just have to add that this was not a mistake on the district's part. So, we had our warrant, we had our numbers, we had our calculator, all of that was approved by the Ulster County Real Property Services. Our calculation was correct. But somehow, and I, Sullivan County had contacted us, and they were concerned about this vendor for a number of reasons, but we said that we were going to check all the information, all of the schools, and check our information compared to what was on the disk. We did that, everything checked out, and then after the bills were ran, there was a $1,000 difference. Now, legally, our attorneys advised to decrease next year's warrant, but I just want to be very clear that our warrant and our calculations were correct. It was in the printing of the bill, and on the vendor side of it, that it was incorrect.
Ulster County and Rochester, yeah, Mam, Town of Mamakating, and the Town of Rochester, they're all correct. They're, they're on the money.
Worthing.
Oh, Worthing, yeah.
Well, we hope that there are never mistakes, so, you know, and this looked like, because you covered so many properties, it's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of, a lot of properties.
Correct.
So, it was concerning.
Yeah, Vince, I just want to give kudos to you, because one of the areas that, for, quite frankly, has been an eyesore for a lot of years, is that area walking into the main gym, where people come for games, and the cafeteria, and the, last year on our walk-through, we saw that the building had the bricks failing, and some of the salt marks on it, and it's just very noticeable with the new cover, and with the, the lighting, and things that are coming in. It's just beautifying our area in there, and I think it's just the most noticeable part of things. So many times, we do work to aging buildings, that people never see, you know, pipes and interior, and this really is just a great relief to look at that, and when we put the new benches in, it's even going to be nicer. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Urbina Medina?
Just an update on two items. Today, the new teachers participated in their mentor-mentee training, half-day of training for the mentees, and a half-day of training for the teacher-mentors. Upcoming next week, and also the last week of September, will be two training sessions for the teachers who are now part of the Super Kids program. We have Super Kids in place pre-K through grade two at this point, and we have another round of implementation training taking place in September, and a follow-up advanced portal training, and the portal is the vehicle that the teachers use in the classroom, it's the online component, so things are moving along very well.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Okay, so we can go on to the resolutions. Five point, let's see, 5.1, teacher aides. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby amends the effective date of employment from August 29th, 2018, to September 4th, 2018, for the following one full-time teacher aide, Vanessa Nixon, Angela Youngar, Alex Aw, Jamie Wickman, and Tomasa Gutiret.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 5.2, be it resolved that Charles Murray be appointed as a long-term substitute teacher at a contractual rate of $65,666. Step one, bachelor's plus 54 credits plus master's, effective September 4th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, or the return of the teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Ananmas. 5.3, registered nurse. Be it resolved that Barbara Corbar be appointed registered professional nurse to work with student 27107 at a contractual rate of $52,823. Step three, bachelor's plus zero, for the period of September 4th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, or until the student no longer needs the services, whichever is earlier.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass. Be it resolved that Sean, Sean Moore be approved as a home tutor at a contractual rate of $55 per hour's work for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Be it resolved that Juan Morales be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of $95 per day work for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Certified substitute teacher. Be it resolved that Paul Chambers be appointed certified substitute teacher at a rate of $125 per day work for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Let's see, be it resolved that the resignation of Juan Cruz, security tenant, be accepted effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Let's see. That the board resol, I'm sorry, the resolution is, the board resolution dated 8/2018 regarding the co-curricular appointment of Marcy Straub for middle school open gym, be modified to read as follows. Appointed to middle school open gym as a substitute at a rate of $23.16 per session.
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? You got that?
Six to two, motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm in the right place here. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the co-curricular personnel, as set forth on the list below, be approved at the contractual rate listed for the 2018-19 school year, and we have middle school open gym Linda Hausworth, 26.16 per session, 23, I'm sorry, $23.16 per session. A motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Six to, motion passes.
Motion passes. 5.10. Be resolved that the co-curricular personnel, as set forth on the list below, be appointed- Be resolved that the co-curricular personnel set forth on the list below be approved at the contractual rate listed for the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school year. This is the middle school, high school, another-way substitute, Jeanette Kohler, fifty-five dollars an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Five point one, one, co-curricular personnel. Be it resolved that the co-curricular personnel set forth on the list below be approved at the contractual rate listed for the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school year.
Move the list as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those, oh, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Five point one point two, summer techs. Be resolved that the resolution dated six twelve eighteen for Andrew Dawson and Kyle Guinea to work summer technology maintenance under the supervision of Edwin Moses Aponte be amended to include an additional ten hours for summer work.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? I would like to actually, I have something to say about this. Normally, we do not approve things. In other words, the work can't go on until the approval happens. So I just want an assurance that this won't be anything like a practice. I mean, it's very rare, and for many years, we struggled to get out of the routine of approving things after they happened, so.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. John?
As we discussed, I think the issue here was that, as we got closer towards the end of summer, and with the increase in technology and the air conditionings and all the other extra work that was done in the building, that this was kind of to close up work that needed to be done so that we could be ready for the opening of school. But I, I agree with you. Normally, we don't approve posts, but this was necessary.
Wayne?
So, agreed. But going forward, I think that if we're going to be appointing, if we're going to be authorizing money, we should know about it in advance. So maybe a phone call, asking if it's okay before we just do it would be helpful.
Thank you.
But in those situations that come up, where, where we don't have a board meeting for two weeks, and it's August twenty-fourth, and they got to get it ready, that, that, you know, we have to defer to the administration on that, that that's a choice they have to make to get it ready.
We get called for much less, in my opinion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Julius?
I don't think that situations like this one are things that you plan or you even know. We are pressing to, to have it done so that we can have our walk-through and see it done and have it cleaned up. We are pressing to make sure that on the first day of school, things happen. And when things happen because they weren't seen or they weren't planned, there's no way we can avoid it totally. But we, we've made it aware that we don't want it to become a habit, and I think that's well understood. But there's times that we're going to have to be ready to accept it and bow, and this is one of those times, I believe.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Five point one, three, fall coaches. Be it resolved that the following coaches for fall...
Motion to move the list as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a, a point of information here. The football chain crew isn't considered a fall coach, is it? It's just a...
It should be, but yeah.
Could, could we...
We can change it.
Can I amend it to just change those to separate them?
What would that normally go under, fall sports?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Do you need a second for the amendment, John?
It's just the title. It's not, it's just the title of the, oh, maybe.
So I'll second it then. Well, you have a coach there.
Yeah, we can just call it fall sports. Be it resolved that fall sports be approved as indicated.
Lisa, that's why I made the motion, because the chain crew's not a sport.
That's right.
Okay. They're not coaches, so...
Should just be fall personnel. So upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the following personnel for fall sports be approved as indicated. You have that, Nafisa? Following personnel.
Do we want to separate the coach out of that one, to make it easier, or no?
I think if we just say personnel under fall sports, we should be okay.
Fine.
So do we have to walk back this?
We did. Well...
Yeah, so that's what my motion is.
Wayne's second.
So we're good? Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Very good. Five point one point four. Be it resolved that Margaret Tully shall be compensated at her hourly rate of seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for her attendance at Family Court on September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, and any adjourned date thereafter for an Ellenville Central School District student.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Willie?
This attendance is outside of the school day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Be resolved that Allison Chapin be compensated at an hourly rate of sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for any hours beyond her workday to attend Family Court on September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, and any adjourned date thereafter for an Ellenville Central School District student.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We're on the budget.
Motion to move six point one and six point two.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Does anyone want to take anyone, anything out of there and do it separately?
I have two questions on six point one for next time. Mr. Napoli, does county waste participate in single-stream recycling? And secondly, check number eighty-three forty-three for Moody's for twenty-one thousand dollars. Just a little explanation on that.
I can answer the second one, but not the first one I have to look into.
So, so Moody's...
Point of order, please. If, if the motion was to move it, and then we had a second, we have to take that back to discuss it separately. No? If we put, if, if the motion was to go six point one and six point two together, and then you had questions, and you take them, we just have to break it down, right, individually?
I believe that's the case.
So, so what do you, how do you move forward with that?
So then, yes, Wayne to change his motion.
Okay, so Wayne, would you change your motion, please? And we'll do them both separately?
Sure, move six point one. Second.
Okay, so this is the July two thousand and eighteen treasurer's report and budget detail report be accepted as written. Any discussion on that?
So my question remains the same, probably for next time.
Well, I can answer the Moody's now, if, if you want. So, so Moody's is a company that, that rates organizations. And they rated us so we could get a better bond rating, or a lesser bond rating. In our case, our Moody's rating was very well. So when we borrowed the twelve million dollars for the capital project that we just finished, we got a better bond rating. Therefore, it's cost us less money to actually borrow the money over the next fifteen years. So we had to pay them to do that, because people are just not going to believe Vince Napoli say, oh, yeah, we're going to pay our bills. A company actually does that, and they're expensive.
This is the same Moody's that gave Lehman Brothers a triple-A rating?
A must. Point well taken.
Okay. Six point two.
Motion to move six point two.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Education resolutions. Seven point one, memorial award. Resolve that the Maxine Chapin Memorial Award in the amount of five hundred dollars be established pursuant to the terms and criteria designed by the donor.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Those have been laid out in the document that we got, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any other discussion?
This is a great award.
Yes, yes. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I E Ps. Result, let's see, what number is this, sorry. Seven point two.
Motion to move...
Resolve that the attached list of student I E Ps be acknowledged appropriate, as appropriate, and there are sixteen of them.
Move the list as presented.
Any discussion? Construction resolutions.
Move eight point one to eight point five.
Second.
Eight point one to eight point five. Second. Any discussion, any that we want pulled out? No discussion? No pulled out? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Nine point one.
Motion move nine point one through nine point three.
Second.
Any one that is to be removed from that consent? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next meeting is September twenty-fifth. Again, the construction people, the architects and the financial advisors will be here so that we can hopefully pass a resolution for the referendum in December. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, right. Anything else to put on the agenda for next time? Anyone is interested in seeing something on the agenda?
I'd just say that we're less than a month away from a Hall of Fame induction, and we'll have a full report next meeting on where we stand. We are, we have added a breakfast for the honorees on the morning of the induction as well, and we'll get information coming out with that.
Very good, John. Thank you. I look forward to it, if I'm right.
Absolutely.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.